Okay, call to order. The Pickle City School Board of Education meeting for November 19th, 2020, regular meeting and agenda. Mr. Hiddle, if you would please roll call.
Mr. Height.
Here.
Mr. Fraser.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mrs. McMackin.
Here.
Mr. Bostick.
Yeah, here. Okay, if you would please stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order here is approval of the October 22nd, 2020, regular meeting and the November 12th, 2020, board work session. They have a...
So moved.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Hiddle, do we roll call that or?
Either way, you can do, if there's any objections, and just unanimous consent, or you can roll call either one.
So we can just do verbal? Okay. Well, all in favor of accepting, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay, that's your passes. Next, approval of the agenda for tonight. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Okay, all approving of the agenda for tonight, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Any opposing? No? Okay, passes. Okay, board reports of our work session. On the 12th, we had a work session at Johnston Farm, and the board got together, and we also had, the ad team came out in the afternoon. And, you know, it was a meeting, it was a work session, so no decisions were made, no action was taken, but a lot of discussion, sharing of ideas. Some of the things, just to highlight that we did, we had a COVID-19 update, we reviewed the numbers. One thing I would like to really bring out, you know, schools, according to even the health departments, are one of the safest places for the students to be. So we're very glad to hear that, and we're going to keep doing all we can to safely remain open. And, you know, there's, it's a lot of things to do, but our staffs and everybody are working hard to do that. We had a facilities update, we're looking at a feasibility study on athletics and our facilities to be coming up. Financial update, we viewed the new state financial funding formula. We did some board planning, we looked at future committees and dates, we had an athletics update, we're going to continue to spotlight all athletic programs, and the Indian Nation Station is something we're going to look into, being a key component with that. We also talked about the Ohio Department of Education's Whole Child Plan, we viewed their outline and components of the program, then we looked and compared what we are currently doing and possible things maybe that we need to look at doing in the future. Student services, they're providing services to all students in a myriad of ways, they're doing a great job. And student attendance, we had a comparison of last year and our remote learning, and we discussed how we could better serve our students if students, well, I'll slow down. If, one thing we'd like to get out there too, if students show symptoms, please have them stay home. So with that, that's pretty much what we talked about. Any comments, anybody? Okay. Well, moving on, hearing of the public, I didn't get anything, Mr. Lyons, so I think we're good there. And now we're to the treasurer's agenda. Mr. Hiddle, please.
Good evening. Tonight is the five-year forecast part of the meeting, so I have a presentation for you, but were there any questions about the October financial reports? Otherwise, we'll get started with this. I pulled up my presentation from last year, and I found it a little bit humorous to look back at what, one year ago, what the concerns were versus today. So remember our forecast in November 2019? We had frozen state funding, and that was an issue. Well, it's not frozen anymore, it's been reduced. Talked about unforeseen circumstances, COVID-19 came around, and then we talked about the future of health insurance, and that is still a question, and the nates now trying to help it. So, one thing to note, when we look at the revenues, and as I forecasted this out, you'll see in 2019, we were a little over $39 million, and in '20, we were almost $150,000 less than $39 million, so about $750,000 change in revenues in one fiscal year. You get to 2021, and you'll see that there's another reduction of almost $500,000. So this is the impact of COVID-19 on the district, our first cut that came here in state funding, and then this is where we're seeing funding reductions in income tax as well as state revenues. From everything I've been told at this point in FY '22, we can expect our state foundation four million money here to go back and start matching where we were at in 2019. Just remember, where we were at in 2019, we were at the cap, so we were still not getting about a million dollars that we needed to operate. So with that being said, we've been told to bring it to here and leave it flat. What is this due to revenues? You'll see, it basically slows us down to where there's barely any movement up annually. Income tax revenue, of course, is down right now, as we expected it to be, it should hopefully come back up in '22, and maybe between '22 and '23, we'll get back to a level where we're accustomed to being. So we'll see how that goes and then how that rolls out in the future. So we have stagnant revenues, as we've discussed, or reduced revenues. We talked about being at the cap, and then these are the cuts that we receive in the state formula, they're equal amounts for both fiscal years. So how are we going to maintain ourselves in the black? And the good news about how we did part of this is, we've had relief in federal funds. Everybody keeps giving all these great ideas, saying, hey, we could do this with COVID money, hey, we could do that with COVID money. The COVID money of $168,000 is gone, it was gone fairly quickly, just to be able to get the supplies and things that we needed to be able to open up school. Since then, we've needed to buy more microfiber towels, those were like $14,000 the other day. We have more masks that we needed to buy for transportation, that was another, almost $1,000, just for the transportation department. So these things that we, that keep cropping up, we keep having to pay now out of the general fund, because there's not additional COVID funds available for a lot of these purposes. One of the things that could help solve our problem, when we get to the expense side of this, and we've talked a little bit about this at the work session, is that there is a new funding formula that's out there. It could help the district if it passes, but the big question is, is it going to pass if it passes? With the state, right now, they're running a surplus, they have $2.6 billion in the reserve, and they have a $700 million surplus right now that they're running for the fiscal year. So right now, the state still looks healthy, even despite all the COVID that's going on, but this is going to be substantially expensive to the legislature, and I don't know that their hearts in it to fix it. Instead, they're more worried about ed choice right now than actually fixing funding for public schools. So that's what the bill is, it's being pushed, I know that you all received emails about that, that's what they're worried about, not actually trying to fix something that's been broke for over 30 years. But we'll see, it could help. You know, I've said routinely, barring any unforeseen circumstances, clearly where we're at today is an unforeseen circumstance. Another thing that we've done is we've limited our expenses, we've reduced them by $500,000, over $500,000, just coming into this year, not knowing how we were going to be able to fill that hole that was coming from the reduction in state funding. And so that was $500,000 last fiscal year, and it's $500,000 this fiscal year, and so overall, we've helped to fill that by doing our own internal cutting, not just relying upon federal stimulus funds. And again, I put a note in here that school choice, ed choice, is the biggest thing that's facing us besides COVID. So it's not just that particular issue, we also still have to deal with ed choice and the fact that as this continues to roll out initially, the, as school choice bill looks, well, hey, we don't have any schools on the list, but it's set up to basically get everybody on the list in the long run. And so we just got to be aware that, just because it looks like it fixes a problem, in the long run, it doesn't fix the problem. So then we look at our expenses line, and you can sort of see the result of the cutting and tightening of the belt that we've done. We spent $38 million last year, and we're right on track to spend another $38 million this year. So we have done what we need to do to reduce the budget, but then you see it pop back up, almost $2 million, but you've got to remember that there's a big chunk of that money that is federally funded money that's paying for salaries right now, it's almost $100,000. So that's a big chunk of it that's coming back on, and then we usually have increases somewhere between $800,000 to $1 million a year, depending on salaries and then purchase services. One of the biggest things right now in purchase services is our special ed cost, ESCs. So you'll see this number keeps growing, and it's growing at a very rapid rate, almost as much, if not more, than what we have going on with salaries. So that's just something that we're required to do, we have to educate our special ed students, and so it is a big expense to the district, and that continues to grow. A little bit about health insurance, a reminder of sort of where we're sitting at this time last year, we received a 70.2% initial increase on health insurance, we got it down to 27.9% for 2020. We're told to expect 12% to 13% increases. We implemented that EMS program, we had a really great participation on that, we had like 25% of our staff has taken advantage of that opt-out program, and that has resulted in us, I don't know if I can see if I can get things on there, with a 5.4% increase for 2021. So we're not in the ballpark of a 70.2% or a 27.9%, but for a 5.4% increase in 2021. So we initially thought it was going to be seven, we kept doing some more negotiating and some work on that, and so we were able to get to 5.4%, we finalized that stuff yesterday afternoon. So the overall picture, you'll see, our cash balance right now looks a little higher than normal, and a lot of that is because the money that was received here in October normally comes in July in income taxes. You'll see, like, if you go back and look at our income tax deposit, it was a lot more than usual, that's because everyone was given an extension on their income tax filings, and so all that money came in late and then didn't show up until October. So part of this actually would go here in this process, and then it would sort of fill the chart a little bit more, so that's why it's a little bit off. But we're exactly where I expected us to be at this time. Bottom line is, is that our finances are manageable at the moment, although you'll see in the five-year forecast that we're entering that period of where deficit spending becomes a possibility. If that school funding formula goes through, it should help solve our problem for the next six years or so, is what that formula is supposed to do. So we need it to happen. So when it's time to push, I mean, I'll need the community's support and everything. If you want us to stay out as long as possible for not asking for a tax increase, the best thing we can do is contact our legislature and let them know, we need a new funding formula. So this funding formula has to happen, and we could be good for the foreseeable future. But we're going to keep doing everything we have to do to try to keep the budget balanced without impacting the classroom, that's been our commitment, and we're still sticking to that at this point. We'll continue to monitor and keep the board discussions in ed choice, and obviously with this new funding formula, and anything you can do to help in that regard will be appreciated. And we've completed 13 years without deficit spending, hopefully we'll complete 14 years this year. I can't say for certain, because it's been that unpredictable. So we'll see what happens, and that's just my contact information, if anybody in the community wants to talk or has questions, I'll be glad to answer. You guys have any questions?
Well, sort of.
Okay.
In your conversations with the legislators, has anybody addressed the question of spending public money for private education as being unconstitutional?
There was a court ruling, I believe it was in Wisconsin, that basically said that this is permitted, and so they've been sticking to it, and it went to the Supreme Court, so that's the justification they're using for that. But I understand, I make the same argument constantly myself, is I still don't understand, if we're not all playing on the same field, we don't get to pick our students, we don't get to hand-select them, we don't get to say, we don't want to do those tests, we're going to do these tests, we don't have the same options that the private schools have, why are they getting state funding and they're allowed to just say, no, we're not going to do that? Why don't we have that option too? I mean, if we're all in the same playing field and all holding the same accountability standards, that's one conversation, but the way that things are set up right now, we're behind the eight ball every time, because we're handcuffed by what the government, by elected officials want to do, not what's right by our teachers.
I hope people realize that that little word "state funding" means it's funded by us, and I wish they would let their legislators know, don't put our money there.
Well, it's not private anymore, right? I mean, the whole concept of private is, it's a separate entity than having the public pay for private education.
They announce, are there, do we have schools on that list?
Currently, no.
Okay.
Not under the new bill, we do not. Currently, we have a, the Washington building is in...
Right.
An ed choice zone.
That was, I mean, that was, that's been on there for a while now, hasn't it?
The problem with that was, it was from the old school, we had to keep that IRN number when we opened the new school, so we have a whole different population, different grade level, different time period, it's not relevant to the school that's currently in existence.
So there was things called Safe Harbor in there, and it gets into the weeds, but in reality is, the data was wrong, and they thought the Safe Harbor would help, in reality, it hurt us because it was keeping old data from students who weren't in that building, it's not even comparable data to what they're using today. ODE doesn't care, that's the IRN you're getting. And so Mr. Haynes and I actually fought hard about that with ODE when we built the new buildings unsuccessfully, they didn't really care what we had to say.
Since then, we've protested, but they just won't hear it.
You know, who would, if, people out there that are watching, if they would like to try to help and send letters, best thing to do, I know our reps are Senator Steve Huffman, right?
Yes.
And Representative Jenna Powell, do we have anything that could direct them on our website to their, I know if you go to their individual sites online, you know, they've got an option to send a message, and the messages really do help for anybody out there, it is tremendous if we get people that would.
It does, because they've said to us before, if no one says anything, they don't assume that people are concerned about it.
Yeah.
Speaking up and saying, and especially in your position as a board member and mine as a superintendent and so on, it makes a difference if we're speaking up, otherwise, they think it's a wash and it's okay, because no one's really bringing that to their attention.
Right, I did send out one on Tuesday, but, you know, I mean, that's one, but we need several, you know?
Well, we can put a template up on, online, I'm sure that's not an issue, that would be helpful, so the public can download it, fill in what they want to fill in, and send it in as well, that way they have the address.
Yeah, that would be good, yeah.
And at least they start for something to say, because that's the only way we're going to get anything done, because like Dwayne said, that, they keep telling us all the time, we don't hear anything, except from us. Well, we have to, I mean, we have to support our public schools, like, we can't just keep dodging the bullet, and that's what they're doing all the time, they kick the can down the road, they try to avoid the conversation instead of trying to work on a solution.
Well, that's why some of these bills, some of these proposed bills are introduced one day, and within a week, the thing is voted on, even shorter than that in some times, because they don't want the light of day on it.
The state of, you know, Department of Education has made it very clear that equity is a priority in their strategic plan, and that's come down to our level, if they want equity, they're going to have to make it where everybody's accountable for the same processes. I mean, again, you know, they can't have different tests than us, they can't have different requirements for students to attend, not attend, et cetera. If everybody has the same requirement, it would make a much better impact.
Mm-hmm. And it'd be nice if they had a good growth measure on those tests, too.
Correct.
To see how much we actually grow our students. Okay, anybody else? Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, we need a motion for the treasurer's agenda vote.
So moved.
Second? Okay. Okay, Mr. Hiddle, would you do the roll, please?
Mrs. McMackin. Mr. Height.
Aye.
Mr. Fraser.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye. And Mr. Hiddle, thank you very much. It's, you know, that's one thing we're fortunate to have, Mr. Hiddle is up on all the current things, and as all the administrators are, keep us, they keep us well informed, thank you. Okay, next we have superintendent's report, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Our building update for student achievement this month will be the Pickle Junior High School, and we have our lead principal, Mr. Jeff Clark, who will lead us in that discussion.
Good evening, Jeff. Real quick, I would like to share that we're off to a great start at Pickle Junior High School, we're having a great year, students are doing a great job, staff is doing a great job. I would like to share a brief video with you with some, just some sights of what's happening at our school this year, and then I'll come, I'll come around after that with some highlights from our year so far.
My school year this year has been very good. We've had very helpful and respectful staff members and people around the school. The biggest challenge probably this year is the masks because sometimes they, like, it's hard to breathe with them. And like, they are very challenging to just always keep them on your face and try not to touch that and fix it and adjust it and stuff. And the best part of the school year has been being able to socialize and come back to school. I really enjoy being able to see all my friends and being back in the school environment because being back in the school environment has helped me very much with my schoolwork because I have teachers here to be able to help me. Corona because of the masks we have to wear and the precautions that our teachers have to make because they can't do certain activities that they used to do with their older students because of social distancing and making sure that we have our masks on. They also muffle us a little bit, but it's okay. The best part of school this year has been being able to come back and socialize with people after we'd been put on lockdown and quarantine for all those months. And also, I like participating in the school's sports and activities they have to offer.
So I first need to thank Peyton Neff and McKenna Watson were the two students that you saw being interviewed, and they helped me put that video together. And I think they they very much simplified what it's been about this year, and that's kids being back together with other kids and with teachers. Peyton talked about having her teachers there to support her. And I'm really, really excited about having students back in the buildings this year, and I appreciate everything everybody has done to be able to make that happen because it's been a lot of work. But that's why we do it, and and we appreciate that. Some of the highlights from this school year that I want to throw out there and give you an opportunity to ask questions if you have any. Three new, brand new staff members that are building this year. McKenna Geisi is teaching eighth grade math for us. Maggie Bergman is teaching eighth grade language arts. And Haley Haas is our new choir director at the junior high. Another highlight we want to focus on is our one-to-one Chromebook program. And we were planning on doing that pre-COVID, and it was accelerated a little bit and changed how we rolled it out. But it's going very well. Our students are active throughout the day on their Chromebooks. We're still trying to also find those opportunities to do some paper, paper pencil activities because kids miss that. And we want to make sure we we still have those opportunities, but that's going very well. Success Bound, we continue to focus on Success Bound. All of our teachers built in as one of their personal goals for the year, something supporting our building Success Bound initiative. We use our advisory period to really support that, doing things like grade checks, working with kids this year very heavily to work on checking email. As we went remote last year, we found that that wasn't a real great way to communicate with students yet. They weren't ready for that, they weren't used to that, and we've really gotten them in that that habit now. So that's going well. Also, we implemented a new ELA curriculum this year. We're using a program called My Perspectives. Our language arts teachers spent the summer working with Scott Bloom to get that ready to roll out. It's going very well. And finally, I know Mr. Hare talked about this last month, but I like to brag on our students as well. We had two fall sports teams in the season as champions. Our seventh grade football teams went undefeated this year and won the MVL in seventh grade football. And our boys cross country won the MVL for the second year in a row, went undefeated for the whole season. So and if you make it to the junior high, if you've been out, if you haven't looked, just last week, Coach Fashioner for the boys got, it's a nine-foot trophy with, and he told them at the beginning of the season, if they went undefeated and won again, he would get the biggest trophy he could get to still fit in the trophy case. And it's nine feet tall. And the other really cool piece of it is it has a runner, the little trophy runners, the little guys on top. It has one for each boy that was on the team. They're kind of scattered throughout the trophy, all over the trophy. So that's pretty cool. So off to a great start. Hopefully, we'll be able to keep it going all year. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
You know, we saw, Mr. Thompson and I went out was yesterday, and we toured all the buildings. Very different atmosphere. It was very different. I mean, everybody was very directed, they were wearing the masks, social distancing. Students really love being back. They really do. But, I mean, I was, I was amazed, but there's just a different feel in the air, you know, with this whole, whole COVID thing. But everybody was very self-directed and going where they needed to be, and I was very impressed. I just want to thank everybody, our staff, administrator, everybody has done an outstanding job. They really have, the students, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Clark. So kind of along that line, one of the biggest questions I get every day is, are you guys closing school? And it is our absolute intent not to do that. We hear regularly from parents, they're working. It's going to be a real challenge with the economy still open for them to try to take care of childcare. And we hear from teachers and and students regularly, they want to be in school. It's probably, it's not probably, it is the best place for them right now, and it's very safe. Mr. Lyons, would you review some numbers with us, and then we'll talk a little bit more about what we hope to accomplish.
Yeah, and and Mr. Bostick talked a little bit about the numbers I gave you last week. And based on those numbers still, because we haven't calculated this week's N, still looking at that less than 1% mark for our students who were positive and under 3% of our staff who have been positive. That's information that's, that's we are aware of. Certainly with our kids who are remote, sometimes they report that. Most of the time, we're not going to get that information. The biggest thing that we deal with are the close contacts. And most of the close contacts that that our students are experiencing aren't from inside the school, and I think that's an important piece. Had a couple of situations that multiple kids had to quarantine, but usually they're from outside or extracurricular activities. They're not, because we're doing, I believe, a good job of keeping that social distance and masks on. And again, the students, the biggest part of, if you look at the percentages, around 5% of the total numbers that are close contacts are about 5% out of school, and then the rest of the, like, 2% to 3% are actually happening in school based on our close contacts because a positive case was there. At this point, also, I think it's important that our teachers have been able to not, not be close contacts while in school when there's a close contact, with the exception of, I think, three cases. In those cases, three, there were four cases, three of those, it was smaller children, difficulty with masks, proximity was important with your preschoolers, things like that. It's difficult to determine that there wasn't a close contact, so it's easier to be safe in those kinds of situations. So I'll update you with new numbers again once we get through this week. One of the things that we noticed too was, as you heard from the Department of Health and Miami County Pickle, was the last couple of weeks, things really started to get elevated with numbers. So of course, when when that happens in a community, we we feel that too. What we're feeling that with is those close contacts outside of school, teachers are quarantined, kids are quarantined, things like that. But also, what we're seeing as a kind of interesting cycle is, we haven't really talked about this, is the people, especially staff members that are coming back, it's helping kind of offset those new cases that may have to be out as close contacts. So we are in probably one of the better places right now than we've been for our staffing and things like that as it relates to close contacts and positives COVID-19. And our staffs have been amazing at helping each other out. We've only had a few days or a few people each day total in the district where we were struggling to get coverage. Our staff just jumped in and made sure that our kids had had teachers, and it really has been remarkable that it's worked out as well as it had. So like I said, I'll continue to update you like I talked about in the work session. I know we picked up obviously more cases this week, but it was, it was a pretty good week, so.
It's, it's an all hands on deck. Administrators help cover, again, teachers. We've been able to keep good distancing and and less quarantining in school because we do have 26% of our population going remotely. So that's allowed for smaller class sizes, which allows us to spread them out more. So that that's helped as well. We continue to meet with the health department, both Miami County and Pickle's weekly. We get regular updates from them. I share those with you whenever we see that, kind of see how community spread might be impacting the schools. We meet regularly with superintendents as well as for the Miami Valley League with sports. So a lot of good conversations going on, making sure that we're sharing with each other good strategies and how we can help one another, as well as, you know, if one sport team might have an issue, they're very good about letting us know so we can pre-plan and make sure we're keeping everybody safe. So again, you know, a lot of people, there's lots of rumors that they might see stuff about New York City, or maybe there's a big burst in Chicago, or the news kind of really will talk a lot about, you know, big surges and things, but we're looking locally. We're really trying to make good decisions locally, and right now, we're not planning on on closing. So a lot of people wonder about that. They'll call and they'll ask because they see things on national news, and we just want to make sure that people know our intent. Our intent is to really try to stay open because we know that's best for our kids right now. That could change, and if it does, we certainly will communicate that out to parents. All students already have one-to-one computers. We're ready to go with remote. Students would basically log on just as they're attending the class. Teachers will be still reporting to work, they'll be teaching from their classroom but remotely. And we would work through whatever time period we would have to, but our goal again would be to get them right back as soon as we could. So hopefully, that that doesn't happen, but we're prepared. We're ready to go if we have to, and we'll make sure we keep everybody posted on that.
You know, something that that amazes me is, you think of the number of students that transportation deals with
Yeah.
And food service. And you know, I don't, I hate to not mention anybody, but you think about what maintenance and custodial staff, I mean, it's incredible the way these people are keeping this thing going well. It's
We truly, truly have reinvented about everything we do. And that's not just Pickle City schools, that's education as a whole. I mean, the way we distribute food, the way we transport, the way we clean, teach, counsel, every way we've done parent conferencing, everything we have done has been different. And sometimes we say, gosh, we can't wait till we can go back to this. But many times, you know, an administrator or a teacher will say, you know what, this is actually working out better, and I really want to keep this as a result of, we just got to think a little bit differently about some things. So some, some good things will come out of it, but yeah, we're ready for for some, some normalcy, if you will, to to really get everybody back and and just get everybody back under our care.
So 26% online. That's seven, what, 750 kids, right?
Yes.
What if in the, what if in January, they decide that they all want to come back?
Where do we put them? So
We can't physically
So we're going to survey all the people that are on remote learning after Thanksgiving because it'll take us a while to start scheduling and so on. We're going to ask people if they would like to come back. What it would do is change our teacher to student ratio, which means less space. So we've got space for them because they're our students, they've already been on our rosters.
Right.
It just changes the number of people that might have to quarantine if there's a positive case that comes to school. Right now, we're distanced, so we can, we can say, rightfully so, you've had your mask and you've been further than six feet apart, so we wouldn't have to quarantine him if I was positive. Bringing kids back might put another student between us. Now we're closer, now we have more people that are going to have to probably quarantine if we do that.
So according to the health, we'll be able to to reset down to what, three feet?
They're working on a study right now. They're, they're actually, Troy City Schools is a part of that, so they
I know that we talked about that with Dave Larson and
Yep. So they're working on the study, they're collecting data, trying to find out already what's happening in schools. And if if there was a three feet or less distance and somebody had it, did this person actually, you know, get get COVID? So they're hoping to have something, I heard, by the first of the year, I think, based on the study. Whether they make a change after that, I I won't know, but they are collecting that data right now. My, my hope would be, yes. Everybody's wearing masks, they're doing very well with it, they're social distancing well. We're not seeing, again, spread within our schools. Nobody is seeing widespread. The, the fact that people are complying with all the recommendations of cleaning and hand washing and mask-wearing and distancing is a true testament that kids just aren't spreading within the school setting. So if that's true, why, why are we still quarantining so many people if all the protection measures are working? That's, that's my stance and others at this point. We want to keep kids in school under our care.
I mean, there's studies out there that show that it's very hard for a student to pass it on, right? I mean, for the younger kids to
Yeah.
Pass it on, which may with even the added protection of the masks.
Yep.
Yeah, of course, I mean, having, I know, coming from, my son's been out for four weeks now, the first quarter, so
Yeah.
It's, it's much better to have him in school because he's
Absolutely.
Obviously not having that misinformation or that, just that gap in in learning, so.
It's just, you, you saw the girls, so, you know, just being social. I mean, kids, they crave that, they need it, they want it. It's so, it's so important.
Well, the structure too.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Whether we realize it or not, it's good for
Well, I think psychologically, it's good for students to have those interactions. You know, being shut in a house or a bedroom for an extended period is, that's difficult.
You know, was it
It's harder for anybody.
You think about before school opened, there was a lot of news stories about, well, gosh, can kids keep masks on? Can they do this? Can they do that? What would it be? And they'll be widespread. And schools really have done a great job, and kids, you know, kids are doing great. Teachers are doing fantastic. Parents are doing a really good job of communicating and calling and saying, my kid has a symptom, or what do I do in this case? And our nurses, their job is completely different this year. And it, again, it's been an all hands on deck, but it's, it's working. It really is. There are challenges, and there are days that's thin. We get up every morning and look at, gosh, are we going to be able to cover things? Can we run the buses? Can we do this? And it, it really pulls out when everybody comes together because they really want kids to be there. So it, it, it's working. It, you know, again, there could be a time where we, we won't be able to make it, but we're
So a lot of those schools that have already closed or have transitioned to blended learning or whatever, it's not necessarily because of sickness, it's because of staff, correct?
It's mostly because of quarantining.
Like, they, they, they got too many teachers out or the bus department or the transportation department?
Yep.
So, okay.
That's what it mostly is. It's not people being sick, it's they have to quarantine because they were a close contact. They may have gone to a wedding. Somebody got it at the wedding, they were there for, for the, you know, amount of time that it requires them to quarantine, and now they've got to be off for 14 days. That's our biggest challenge, community spread. Yeah. So I did mention again, we're going to, we're going to survey parents that are home right now. So we'll, we'll send something out after Thanksgiving. The end of our semester is, I think, January 15th, if I remember correctly. And it will take us that long to get things rescheduled, the high school, junior high, and so on. So we'll, we'll survey parents, ask them if they really want to come back. We'll make sure we do that and get that information. Few other notes, we won't be able to do our Christmas holiday concerts. We won't meet the requirements of of even trying to get all the kids' parents in. So we've worked on lots of different scenarios, and we wanted to do it, we're just not going to be able to do that. So the directors are working on some ways for parents to get some sneak peeks in on some, some practices through our Google Classroom and so on, because we don't own the rights to the songs, so we can't really videotape them and put them out on Channel Five like we would, we would want to do. It'd be way too costly, and it's just not feasible for us to be able to do that either. So we're going to find ways for parents to get to see their kids. We won't be able to do the senior breakfast this year. We really regret that because that's a fun thing, that kids get to perform and serve the senior citizens, and we greatly appreciate them and always love to do that program, but we'll anxiously bring that back as soon as we can. So I think that's it on my agenda, unless you have anything else.
No, not at all.
All right.
Donations, yeah.
So you want me to go into superintendent's agenda?
Yeah, yeah. Superintendent's agenda.
Yep. Okay, recommend the board approve the list of donations. Just would point out that Bill Bradley was a highway patrolman, longtime Pickle resident and a huge, huge Pickle fan, so a lot of people donated in his honor. We really appreciate that, and he would have been very proud of that. We had a really great donation from Steven and Teresa Mays to the PHS Clothing Bank startup. We have a great program here for students that that are already probably living independent, and really, sometimes they don't, they don't have a home. So they might need clothing, they might need some food, and and they don't really have a place to turn. So we have a couple people here that have been working really hard on making that happen, and we have some people that have stepped up and said they really are, are so pleased with it and happy about it, they just really wanted to donate to it and make sure that it got off to a really good start. So we really appreciate that as well. And that's it for me.
Okay.
Just need to approve that, approve those donations.
Okay. So Mr. Hiddle, would you roll? Yes. Motion to accept. Second, okay.
Mr. Height.
Aye.
Mr. Fraser.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye. Okay, so, measure passes.
Thank you.
Well, personnel agenda, Mr. Lyons.
Yep. I just wanted to point out that number 24 is a retirement resignation. Shelley Berkheimer out of Washington, that'll be happening at the end of, or end of the year. Outstanding person, as you all know, who have gotten to know her throughout the years, so thank you for her service, and of course, we'll recognize her at another time as well. And then, we talked in the work session also about the challenge with substitute teachers, so I want to make that appeal again. We'll continue to use our social media accounts to, to get people engaged. We've picked up a few recently, but that requirement is a four-year college degree. Fill out some paperwork with the county, have an interview with me, and we expedite that, make that pretty quick so we can get people in the buildings. We just did that for the long-term sub that's going to start Monday with us. So although we, we've been in pretty good shape this week, that challenge is out there and will continue to be out there as long as we're struggling with COVID-19. So anybody who's interested that meets those qualifications, let me know. We also are always looking for substitute bus drivers. Train you, get you prepared to be able to be on a bus if a full-time position opens. And then sub-custodians, and we actually have some positions open for custodians, so if you're interested, contact me, and we can go through the process to get you engaged in those positions. So outside of that, not a lot of unique things on the agenda for this evening. Any questions for me?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lyons. Okay, personnel agenda vote, we need a motion to move forward.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor of the personnel agenda vote, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, passes. Okay, old business, there is none. New business.
There's a recommendation for the board to approve the continued appointment of Jeremy Hiddle to the position of treasurer for a five-year period commencing August 1st, 2021, through July 31st, 2026.
Okay. Okay, we have a, we have a motion to, for the hiring of Mr. Hiddle.
No move.
Second. Okay. Jeremy, do you need to roll call this, or can we?
Each one of these will need to be roll called individually. Thank you, Mr. Ford, though, I appreciate your support.
Anything for you.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Fraser.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye. Okay.
There's a recommendation for the board to approve the attached resolution to update the plan for the Upper Valley Career Center Board of Education. So they had a number of board members that would have finished their term at the same time, so they realigned that and staggered it so they weren't losing so many valuable veterans all at the same point, so they kind of just moved things around. So that plan just needs to be approved by us because you have two representatives, Andy Height and Mr. Bostick, so.
No move. Second.
Okay. Mr. Hiddle?
Mr. Fraser.
Aye.
Mr. Ford. Mr. Height.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Hiddle will do three and four.
Okay.
Number three is approving the next year 2021 agreement with EMS. It's for the same amount as last year. There's been no changes, and we'll continue doing what we're doing. Any questions about the EMS program?
Okay, maybe we have a motion. Second.
Second.
Okay. All right. Mr. Hiddle?
Mr. Height.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Fraser.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye. And on, this is just the first read, correct?
Correct. Do you want me to tell you what this is about?
Yes, please.
So basically, this is dealing with changing our inventory procedures. We're updating our policies on fixed assets and getting them all in line with the administrative guidelines. It's just something that I wanted to do, something I decided to review. We had made a tweak a few years back, but then when we started looking into it, it didn't match all the way across the board. So the changes that you see in here are reflected upon what we already agreed to do, but they didn't cover all the policies. So whenever we updated this, I think in 2016 or something like that, it didn't cover every single policy that was tied to this. So it was something that Norm from Neola and I discussed, and then we went back and we started updating the rest of the policies that were in line with that, because he likes to use this, yeah, it's April of 2016 is when we last reviewed this. And so he likes to use our policies as the, you know, to show other people, here's what they're doing at Pickwa, but then he noticed that this wasn't quite in line, start following through the administrative guidelines. So basically, this ties it all back in. We don't, if it lasts for longer than five years and it costs more than $5,000, it's a fixed asset, but that doesn't mean that we don't put it in for inventory purposes. If it's worth more than $500, we keep an inventory track spreadsheet. It's a bigger spreadsheet than you think, of that information. So we have an inventory fixed asset sheet, and then we also have fixed assets for the GAAP reporting that you see when we do a CAFR and all that stuff. So that's, that's pretty much the sum of it. I don't know if you've got questions, but.
That's a good, it's a good idea to keep up legally. That is good.
We just want to get it all tied back together.
Yep.
Sometimes you fix one thing and break three more, and this is just making sure that it's all tied together.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Hiddle.
Yep.
Hearing of the public non-agenda items, I have no, nothing there. Our next meeting, regularly scheduled meeting, is December 9th at 6:00 p.m. at the Pickwa High School. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of adjournment? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.